Good evening, everyone. I would like to take this time to call to order the April 4th, 2011 meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners to order. At 6 o'clock, we had a work session to discuss foreign trade zones, possibilities for Currituck County. At 6:30, we had a work session, talk about ordinances that could possibly regulate some of the tour operations in the northern Outer Banks area. We have this evening with us Mr. McCraney. I think he's a retired pastor. He is gonna lead us in prayer in our pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
And let us pray. Eternal Father, strong to save, whose arms bounds the restless ways and steals a quaking heart, hear us when we pray unto you tonight as we gather in this public forum. Our world is restless, and we are confronted with an uncertain future. In this turmoil of uncertainty, we seek and request your abiding presence and divine strength in our meeting tonight, and also in our personal lives. Grant unto our commissioners wisdom, fortitude to make right decisions, coordination among themselves as elected servants of Currituck County's people. For us, may we always seek to love others, to do your will, to give to the community, rather than always wanting to be served. As we gather, bless us all tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to approve the agenda, remove an item six, item seven, and I would like to take out a consent agenda, item two, and move it to item 5A.
Okay. Okay, I have one other change that needs to be added as well. I'd like to add to the consent agreement, a resolution in support of HB 162 exempting small farm processors from wastewater requirements. Do they have a motion?
They'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes aye.
And that includes what I have.
Yes, yes. Okay. Item two is our public comment period. This is a time to hear comments on items not appearing on tonight's agenda. I would ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. McCree will be our attorney, will be our timekeeper. First, on tonight's speaking time, we have Mr. Bobby Hennick.
That was for item eight.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. Let's see. Kevin Johnson was for item five. David Singletary is item four. Marion Gilbert.
Mr. Chairman, and citizens, I just wanted to extend my appreciation and the appreciation to the members of the Airport Advisory Board who attended and represented the board along with the county airport staff at the sun-in-fun activities that we had at the airport the past two weekends. We had some, even with the inclement weather, we still had a good turnout of folks that came out to the airport. Couple pilots got stranded from upstate New York and had to spend the evening in Elizabeth City, but still came over for the activities at the airport. So I just wanted to extend that appreciation, and especially to Dicky Todd, who was, with his culinary skills, ended up being our grill master. So again, I just wanted to extend appreciation for those folks that participated.
Thank you. Mr. Owen Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've asked for a moment of personal indulgence here. This past weekend, the Currituck County Theater Group at the high school, they presented a play called Beauty and the Beast. It was Friday, Saturday, and Sunday afternoon. The reason I say it's personal, my granddaughter was in it. But that aside, this was an excellent production. I don't know if any of you saw it, but I am always constantly amazed about the level and the amount of talent our young people have in this county. And it's all coordinated by Mr. Buddy White, who's the arts and theater dramatite teacher at the high school. And if you didn't see it, you must a real treat, because it was really a great production. And they had standing-room-only crowds at all three performances, and it was at the middle school auditorium. So I would encourage everybody, the next time they put one of these productions on, to please go. But it is really gratifying for me to see what our young people can do and what they do do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have anything?
Chairman, I have one quick thing I wanted to show to the citizens at our last meeting. And Mr. Woody has it up there tonight. I think y'all, the board, will find it interesting as well, as soon as he gets it up there.
It's on my computer, so once it's loaded, it should show up.
What it is, it's a hurricane chart. It tracks, it's done by Travelers Insurance Company, and it shows hurricanes making landfall from 1871 till 2005. I don't know if you can zoom that in, any, Mr. Woody, but if you look up there at the North Carolina-Virginia border, you will see that, right there where he's got the mouse, the zero, look all the way across there, and it shows category one, two, three, four, and five. And it shows from the Gulf of Mexico all the way around through Florida and up the East Coast. And you will see that from the Wright Memorial Bridge through Virginia, since 1871, there hasn't been a named hurricane that made landfall in our area. Yet our area is the one that's continuously punished with increasing insurance premiums. And we keep being told because of hurricanes that our insurance premiums keep going up. Well, as I said, this was done by Travelers Insurance Company. They're a pretty reputable insurance company. And you can see that from the Currituck coast, all the way from the Sanderland, or if you want to take a direct line from the Wright Memorial Bridge all the way up through Virginia, you'll see there has not been a direct hit since 1871, a named hurricane making landfall. And this should just add further fury to anybody that has a home or a business and is paying these exorbitant insurance rates, when people north of us are paying less than us, and they've had hurricanes, people south of us are paying less, and people west of us, and they're good neighbors to the west of us, in Rocky Mountain, Raleigh, and Charlotte-Mecklenburg have had more damage from hurricanes than anywhere on the coast of North Carolina from the Wright Memorial Bridge north. I just, it further exemplifies what the commissioners have been fighting with the insurance department. And I just thought this was something of interest to the folks out there at home, that don't sit there and be silent. You need to be involved in this issue and keep fighting it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. O'Neill, is that possible that you can email that to us?
I absolutely can. I bet you Mr. Woody can email it to everybody, since he's got it on his computer.
Thank you.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, we have proclamation.
Could I squeeze in a public comment real quick?
Certainly.
I didn't have a chance to sign up. I apologize for the interruption, but Peter Bishop, the county's economic development director, first of all, thank you for the half hour you provided me earlier for the work session on foreign trade zone. The point I'm here for is tomorrow evening, we have the last of our community engagement economic visioning meetings. It'll be held at the Water Lily Volunteer Fire Department from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and we're gonna be talking about an economic vision for the Currituck Islands and central part of the county. So that's, again, the Water Lily Fire Department from 6:00 to 8:00 PM tomorrow evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Next on the agenda, we have proclamation recognizing Fair Housing Month. Mrs. Anderson?
In her absence, Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
Okay.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number four, Public Action and Hearing, PB 10-26, Currituck County Sign Ordinance, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 7 Signs, and Chapter 11 Definitions of the UDO. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be brief, since we've covered this in multiple work sessions and a public hearing already. At your last meeting, the board directed staff to provide some additional information, specifically on shopping center signage in the Outer Banks and the size of shopping center signs. We also had a lot of discussion about flags and how flags are allowed or used on the Outer Banks. And with regard to the shopping center signage, I put together my staff and a range of options related to shopping center signage on the Outer Banks. And we emailed that to the board, and over the course of the past week, we discussed it. And staff's understanding is, the direction staff received was to set Outer Banks shopping center signage at a maximum size of 80 square feet. That's what's in your amendment request tonight for you to consider. The additional thing that the board will need to consider, the other substantive part of this, and this will be something you'll have to include as part of your motion, staff along with some citizens and business owners and one of our commissioners met together to discuss flags on the Outer Banks, we came up with the following recommendations on how to handle flags over there. In residential subdivisions, we agreed that there'd be a maximum of four flags at each major subdivision entrance. Open house directional signage be allowed at internal intersections in the subdivisions. A maximum of one flag provided at the model home location, but also a maximum of one banner or sign, up to 30 square feet in size, attached to the model home. And finally, we provided, and what those provisions do is, you can probably figure out, is a way to allow, or to market or attract people into subdivisions that have houses for sale. So we worked through that. One other thing I want to note is, we also mentioned that once a subdivision has come to substantial build-out, there'd be an allowance for a permanent flag pole. There's several subdivisions over there that have permanent flag poles that fly flags, which look tasteful. Those are the substantive changes that I've brought back to you tonight, staff has. Again, sign size is 80 square feet for Outer Banks shopping centers, and then those additions of flag allowances and open house-type things that I just went over. In the instant, in the interest of disclosure, I want to note a couple other things which I would consider to be non-substantive changes, just minor changes we made. I want to clarify that commercial lots are allowed to have one flag per building at each of their building entrances. We do not have flags that are allowed out front in commercial lots. The idea was that, taking away the flags was in lieu of having bigger shopping center signage, and bigger signage for all the lots over there. Clarify that, and this is just a question that came up, that when, we do allow contractor signage, but that doesn't, that's not taken up by any signage that the county requires. So for example, when you post your building permit, your county building permit, that's not a commercial signage. I just want to say that for the record. And also, in our draft, we kind of tweaked or clarified how sign height's calculated and how the landscape area is calculated. And we didn't change any of that, we just kind of, I think, made it more clear. That basically wraps up my presentation on the sign ordinance. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. Mr. Woody, did we not have some negotiations with some of the folks on the Outer Banks as well, and we all kind of come to an agreement that this is where we would try to move to?
Yes, we've had extensive negotiations with people on the Outer Banks, businesses and citizens.
Thank you. Before we get into speakers who are signed up, I just seen another lady and gentleman come in a while ago that were not here earlier. Item seven, let's see, item six and seven, that deals with the recreation park in Harbinger, has been withdrawn. So that has been withdrawn by the applicant this afternoon. So I just figured I would let y'all know.
No, you're not talking about Spot.
Yes, ma'am, Spot, excuse me.
The campground is Spot.
Yes, ma'am, it's been withdrawn.
You may want to explain the delay now, or the process they'd have to go through to reopen that.
And part of the process for them to bring that back forward, it would have to start from ground zero, from scratch again, at least one year from today's date, and they would have to go through all the processes again to bring that forward. So anyone that's here, that was here on that, thank you for coming.
The campground is Spot.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Okay. You have a nice evening. Okay. Back to item four. We have two speakers who were signed up, Mr. Alicia McDonald. I would ask you to keep it three minutes, if you would, please, ma'am.
Oh, I'm not even gonna be one minute. Alicia McDonald, 965 Sunset Crescent in Corolla. I just want to let you all know that this past two weeks, we had a couple of meetings. They were very fruitful. We negotiated in a spirit of compromise, and everybody left the meeting fully satisfied, shaking hands, and I want to thank everybody who participated, Ben, Commissioner Petrie, and you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Singletary. Please give your name and address, sir, for the record.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is David Singletary, 127B Apptuck Drive. I'd like to talk to point 7.4 on the sign ordinance. A couple of items I'd like to bring up, I don't think you had any discussion in the work session that I attended. In particular, 7.4 eliminates digital signs. I'm in the sign business, small business owner with my wife. We have two signs, four faces, located in Currituck County. This is a place we want to do business, where we want to retire to. A couple of things that were going on in this is that, there's been five studies showing that digital signs do not have a different impact upon the vehicle traffic that goes down the highway at any time. Two of them were done by Virginia Tech. These five studies showed that on the average, a person traveling 55 miles an hour sees any obstruction down the road, or any kind of information on the road, or any vehicle driving the road, their rate of speed makes it, they can only see something eight seconds. The Department of Transportation for North Carolina allows an eight-second change on the digital sign. They realize that a person only sees a sign 1.6 seconds. That gives them a very short amount of time to really digest the information. That doesn't matter whether it's a car pulling in the road, whether it's a vinyl billboard, whether it's a poster board, or whether it's a digital billboard. Any one of those is only seen for 1.6 seconds. Couple things I'd like to point out is that one of my customers is Hamptons and Suites in Corolla. They break their demographics down for their customers. 50% are small families, 30% retirees, and 20% other. I have one billboard in Point Harbor that illustrates their one towards a major demographic. If I had a digital sign there, I could change it for all three demographics, make it much more effective advertising, at no increase in cost to the advertiser. This would help them to be more effective, help them get more attendance, bring in more tax from hospitality, from the restaurant sales and stuff like that, and bring more into the county. The other thing I'd like to point out is that there are several things that can be done with digital signs. One can have amber alerts, you can put up crime alerts. There's one recently in Louisiana that found a criminal within 48 hours because it appeared on digital signs around the community. Amber alerts have helped people in digital signs get on, get up in the air within three hours, and they've also gone and caught people in 24 hours. Hurricanes are an important aspect, as we well know, in this county, too. We can put up instructions for people that would be coming to the county as to where they could get information, let them know that you're gonna shut down the Outer Banks in 24 hours or something like that, and give important, critical information to this. I want to be a contributor to this community. I want to be one that only works in this Currituck County, not around the world, not even in another county. So I focus my business on this. And one of the things I'm willing to do, that I put forward in one of the work sessions with the Chamber of Commerce, was that I would be willing to donate 10% of my time to small businesses at a reduced rate. In addition to that, I would be able to put up community event notifications. So if you're having a special event at the lighthouse, or you're having a special event for something else come up in the county, I'd be able to be willing to promote that at a significant loss in revenue. But this could be a benefit for the community. Now, listening to the work session today, where you were talking about fair and trade zones, what's the county doing? Looking ahead, looking to the future, trying to find ways to do things that are important to enhance the economic development of this county. I think that's very forward-thinking. But what's happened in the communication business with billboards around the country is changing. It's going to digital signage. In fact, we are changing people in this county now by having them turn around and have four digital billboards now advertising businesses on-premise, and we're putting up message boards from time to time if necessary, too. As a consequence, we are adapting to digital billboard messaging. And when you go on a highway, people can't tell the difference between a regular billboard and the other, because the lighting is adjustable now and has accounted and made it even lighting for us.
That's time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. No one else has signed up to speak on this issue? I'll ask the board for a motion. Close the public hearing first and ask the board for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes aye.
Mr. Chairman, can we get qualification, does it include the staff recommendation on flags and the banners? Is that included?
Mr. Petrie?
Okay, it does.
Mr. Martin, you okay with that?
On Mr. Woody's recommendation.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Item number five, Public Hearing and Action, PB 10-04, Outer Banks Harley-Davidson, request for a special use permit, request for two special events. Outer Bikes Week, April 16th through 24th, 2011, and Outer Banks Bike Fest, September 30th through October the 2nd, 2011. I guess Mr. McCree or Mr. Woody, which?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, a special use permit, let me just give a brief letting, and I'm gonna be briefer than I usually am, just again, so everybody understands that you are sitting in a different capacity than you were just a few moments ago, where you were sitting in your legislative capacity. Now you're considering a special use permit. A special use permit refers to a situation in which a particular kind of use is permitted in a zoning district, not as a matter of right, but under ordinance provisions that allow the board to issue a special use permit when the board makes specified findings. The Board of Commissioners may also affix other reasonable and appropriate conditions to the special use permit for the protection of both neighboring properties and larger public interest. Pursuant to the Unified Development Ordinance, the county commissioners have to make certain findings in order to issue the special use permit. Some of those findings include that the application is complete, the conditions proposed meet or exceed the minimum requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance, the special use will not endanger the public health or safety, and the special use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. For the purposes of this hearing, then, the Board of Commissioners sits as a quasi-judicial body. That means the Board of Commissioners is required to comply with procedural rules, much like those of a trial court, to provide for the constitutional right to due process, such as sworn testimony of witnesses and no reliance upon hearsay, testimony for critical findings of fact, and then also to allow for and provide the direct and cross-examination of witnesses. Accordingly, those offering testimony will be required to be placed under oath, and only sworn testimony may be considered by the Board of Commissioners in making its decision. The board may not make any critical finding of fact based solely upon hearsay evidence. Hearsay means a statement that is not made at the hearing that the proponent seeks to have admitted as evidence of the truth of the matter asserted in that statement. A witness or expert needs to be present, so questions can be asked about the particulars of their statement. An example would be a petition, which is not valid evidence that can be considered in making a finding. The burden of presenting a complete application required by the Unified Development Ordinance is upon the applicant, but once the applicant has met that burden, the burden shifts to those who are in opposition to the permit. It's also important to note that the Board of Commissioners is not required to listen to the same evidence or statements over and over again, and certainly all parties are encouraged to present their case and testimony in an efficient manner, so that the board may then render its decision. With that, then, Mr. Chairman, anyone who has the intention to testify or present evidence to the board should come forward and be sworn by the chairman.
Thank you. Let's see, we have a Mr. Kevin Johnson who has signed up to speak. If you would come forward, please. Get your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, and that's but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a special use permit to allow an outdoor, or special event, or outdoor recreation-type event. This request came before the board. Last year, the board did grant a special use permit for one year to Outer Banks Harley-Davidson. You can see their location on the aerial photograph on your screen. As you know, Outer Banks Harley-Davidson is located in the south end of the county, near the Wright Memorial Bridge. The specific request is, again, to hold two special events through, in 2011. One is Outer Banks Bike Week, which occurs April 16th through the 24th. The other one is Outer Banks Bike Fest, which occurs September 30th through October 2nd. The subject property is zoned general business, as you can see on the zoning map, which does allow, which does allow this type of use permit request that's before you tonight. Land use plan designates the area as limited service in the Point Harbor subarea. The size of the site is approximately 3.2 acres and is served by county water, an on-site septic system, and of course, for a special event, they would bring in porta-johns, provide additional restroom facilities. As part of the submission, the applicant and their narrative basically states that Outer Banks Harley-Davidson is the hub for Bike Week activities. The facility is utilized to house vendors, live music, and it starts, or serves as a starting point for poker runs and scenic tours. You can see a site plan, it's probably a little difficult to see on your screen, but effectively, they set up vendors or vendor areas around the perimeter of the parking lot, and then they leave the interior parking spaces in the spaces in front of their store available for bikes. Now, I'll note that during the week, the parking lot's available to bikes or motor vehicles or anyone. On Fridays and Saturdays are the days when they actually prevent or do not allow motor vehicles or cars to park in the parking lot. That's on those weekends, or those bigger days, is when the parking lot's reserved for the bikes, for the motorcycles. This is the ninth year of the Outer Banks Bike Week, and each year it's grown. The applicant stated that last year attendance reached 10,000 attendees or more. And one thing they do is, again, a big part of this, I think, is the tours they give, and they have got a tours that, take the Knott's Island Ferry, go to Corolla, go down to the beaches south of us, so they have a lot of that that originates from these locations. In the UDO, you have requirements for how and when you can issue a special use permit for a special event. I'm not gonna read through all those. Basically, just that they don't disrupt the adjoining properties and that things like parking and waste and issues like that can be handled adequately by the applicant. This did go to the TRC. The TRC comments are also in your staff report. Again, I'm not gonna read them all, but I'll note, probably the biggest issue that, to me, that came out of TRC was how to handle parking. This has become a successful event, as with any successful event. Crowd control and parking becomes an issue that needs to be accounted for, and that was probably the one, the biggest issue that came out of the TRC meeting. There were issues about getting the proper health department permits, which they'll do that, they have. Issues about keeping the fire lanes free and clear, and they'll have to do that as well, and getting the proper permits for tents, and all that'll have to be taken care of. This is a special use permit, and there are criteria or findings you have to make as a board. Staffs review those findings in their staff report. I'll bring your attention to finding number four, which is the special use will not endanger the public health or safety. Our finding on that was, as long as the non-motorcycle parking is adequately addressed, we do think the event will have a little impact on the health and safety. And what I mean by that is, the non-motorcycle parking that's not allowed in the parking lot on Fridays and Saturdays, we gotta figure out where to put those cars at. And we kind of put now, and we kind of put that burden back onto the applicant to demonstrate how that would be handled. What I've got before you on your screen is a map that kind of shows the layout of the area. The event location is highlighted in red, and you can see the label on it. On the west side of 158, you see employee parking. They put their employees or their staff on the other side of the highway. We think that makes sense, because that's the minimal number of people crossing the highway, their staff, they probably get there early, they probably leave there later. So we don't really, staff thinks that's probably an appropriate location for employees. Now, obviously, a concern we've had is we don't want to see customers parking on the other side. other side of 158 because, as this board knows, 55, if the traffic's not congested, you've got cars at high speeds, and that's kind of a, somewhat of a blind curve right there. It's a difficult thing for people to get across on their feet. So we, staff feels strongly that that parking on that side of the highway should only be reserved for employees. And what you can see, they've identified, to my knowledge at this point, two non-bike overflow parking locations. One is at the Mutiny Tattoo that's at the corner of Mobile Road and Church Road. And the other location they've identified, and we've got this information in writing from the property owners, is the church located at the corner of Church Road and Gallup Lane. They do have those sites secured for Friday and Saturdays. I'll note that the church is not available the first, the first Saturday this event takes place, so they don't have use of the church for all the weekend dates. The idea being what staff's concern is, is that when we do have the customers parking near the Harley-Davidson store, when they, when the cars can't access the Harley-Davidson parking lot, we need to make sure that, number one, they're not parking on the west side of 158, and number two is they're not parking all up and down the shoulders of 158 or the shoulders of Mobile Road and Church Road. And I think that the Harley-Davidson guys, they've tried to put out signs and cones and things to discourage that, but when you've just got a lot of cars, it's hard to manage people. At this point, and I'll say this, our recommendation was for conditional approval provided that non-motorcycle parking was adequately addressed. I don't think that as staff, I have enough information on the parking or the scope of the events to determine if they've adequately addressed parking of automobiles. If we could assure, if we knew that parking, and maybe Mr. Johnson can verify this, if we knew that parking wasn't going to spill over onto the shoulders of 158, Church Road and Mobile Road, then I think staff could support this request, but given the limited amounts of overflow parking that are available, I don't think staff can support this as submitted at this time. I just, I just think it's, and I'll say again, I think it's critical that people that are in cars and cannot access the event location have a safe place to park and walk to the event. And by safe, I mean, one, not on the side of the highway, and two, not on the side of the road in front of people's residential houses. I know that Mr. Johnson, I think, will address this. I know they are trying to scale down the scope of the activities at this location, and maybe if they move some of the activities to Nag's Head or wherever, maybe that'll reduce the number of cars that stop here, but I'd have to know more information about that. I think the board would have to know more about that, the overall plan, before you could authorize this use permit. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Woody? Mr. Petrie?
Mr. Woody, last year, weren't they required to have some department DOT signs out there that, along the shoulder, that cautioned people to slow down, whatever?
They did. They weren't necessarily required. We asked DOT if we could have the signs placed out to warn motors. I think there was one in Moyoc and the one closer down to the south end of the county. We made that request to DOT again. I have not received any verification or response from DOT that they'll provide those signs.
Mr. Woody, I remember last year, I believe, I believe you came before us last year.
Sir.
And there was a lot of questions about parking and on the side of the shoulders and so forth, and you assured us that was not going to happen. But from my understanding, it was a disaster for the Sheriff's Department out there trying to take care of the traffic, and that what was agreed to and the permit was not adhered to. How do we know this year is going to be different than last year? Before you answer, I'm not opposed to what you're doing, but if it's the same as last year with people parking everywhere and, and the Sheriff's Department having a problem with it, how is it going to be different this year? What's going to happen to keep the people off the shoulder of the road and possibly somebody getting run over? That's, that's the concern, the safety issue. And I think that's what you're talking about, is it not, Mr. Woody?
That's correct. Staff's primary concern is, is the parking issue. There are some things that popped up last year related to security and fire lanes. Those have been addressed, and Mr. Johnson's worked with Susan, Susan Johnson, our sheriff, to make sure that security is adequately addressed, and I don't have any concerns with that. It just goes back to a parking issue.
Sheriff doesn't, I don't see anywhere any adverse comments about it going forward, but we just need to make sure that...
I sound better with my mic off. We just need to make sure that those issues are addressed this year, as, as I was told, they weren't addressed last year, so I guess that's what I need to hear.
Mr. Johnson, if you would come forward and give your presentation, then maybe you can answer some of these questions along in your presentation.
Well, all I can do is address the issues that have been brought up, and it's, it's, we work with it every year. The first issue that I'll address is the events. We've moved most of the events back down to Nag's Head Harley-Davidson and Nag's Head. In the mornings, you can see from the schedule, we have guided tours that leave that generally is 20 to 30 bikes, so it's not a big traffic issue. Most of the, the demo truck that comes down from Harley-Davidson every year is at Nag's Head, so all that traffic will be down south. The only thing, Friday and Saturday, the 22nd and 23rd tend to be our busiest days, and it's just, that's when everybody hits town, is that second weekend. This is the first year we're doing the first weekend, the 16th and 17th. We don't think we're going to have a lot of traffic just because of the turnout and questions we get on email and et cetera. We don't think that weekend is going to be very busy at all. Most of our vendors, which withdraw the people to our dealership, aren't even coming into the following Monday and Tuesday, so I don't think the first weekend's going to be an issue. Last year, we put up about 100 no-parking signs, and we had a sheriff's deputy on, on our payroll to help address that. One was not enough. I mean, that's, obviously, it wasn't enough, so we have two on payroll this year that are off-duty Currituck sheriffs who are going to be there to help control parking. We have doubled our signs. We have 150 signs that we're going to put up beside the roads. I've asked Mr. Woody, I can't ask for materials or support from the Department of Transportation or anybody else that has to come from the county itself. We've suggested getting barriers in, we've suggested getting cones in, but I cannot make that request. It has to come through, through the planning department. We don't know if we're going to get that support. So all we have are these temporary signs that we have printed up, and we're going to put them up all over the place. We are not in enforcement. We can't tell people. We can only tell them you're not supposed to park there. If they ignore us and park there, we have to depend on the sheriff's deputies to either ticket them or have them towed. That's beyond our realm of authority. We do our best. Every year, we've done more and more to try and control parking. This year, we're putting up tape between the signs to try and discourage people from parking between the signs. We've talked to all the residents along Church Road, that if they have an issue with a car parked in their driveway, they call the dealership, and we'll have the car towed as soon as possible. Resources are always kind of tight during that period, too, so we only have a limited number of tow trucks. They can't get there all at one time. So we've tried to do as much as we can, and right now, we're working with the owner of the Potts-on-Kettle, the old site that's now a church, as well as Area Storage. Area Storage has given us a verbal authorization to use his parking lot as satellite parking for automobiles, and we're still trying to get with the owner of the old Potts-on-Kettle site. So I don't know what more we can do to try and support this. Like I said, we're doing everything within our power. We just don't have the authority to stop someone from parking anywhere. They, they'll run right over the signs like they did last year, and then we depend on the Sheriff's Department to help us with that.
I have one question for you. The, what do you, provide a shuttle service then to take them from off-site parking back to where?
With the local area here, we, it's, it's within a five-minute walk, so we're not going to provide a shuttle for the nearby sites. We have increased signage, again, for vehicle parking, which is something we didn't do last year that we're going to try to do this year, with vehicle parking and arrows and different signs, pointing them in different directions. Last year, we tried having volunteers, as the car pulled up, tell them where to go, so that should help move the flow of traffic as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson, you mentioned you had one sheriff's deputy last year on your payroll.
Yes, sir.
Are you planning on having just the one, or perhaps two or three this time?
We have two, two on this year.
You have two? Okay. The amount of parking that you have from last year, how much have you increased it by this year?
With the additional sites, I'd say probably another 60 to 70 vehicles will be able to park in the other alternative sites.
And you have less events going on this year at this site than you had last year?
Absolutely. We have about half the events that are actually going to be, and take up any time at the dealership. We've moved most of the larger events down to the Nag's Head dealership.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Any further questions? Go ahead.
I'm assuming you're going to have food vendors?
Yes, sir.
Alcohol?
No, sir. Absolutely no alcohol on-premise.
Any other questions? If not, I'll close the public hearing. I will ask the board for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve, knowing that the business is there and it is an event people look forward to. I would only hope that what he is trying to do this year to alleviate the parking and the safety hazards along the highway will be taken care of.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Have any discussion?
That includes the staff recommendations and findings and so forth.
Absolutely. And this is for both events, one, the one in September also, I guess? Yes. Okay.
Any further discussion?
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
The September event, should they not comply, or there's some major problems? Can we not review this before September?
You may certainly initiate proceedings to revoke the special use permit. There also are the other remedies available in the Unified Development Ordinance, including civil citations and other measures that might be taken to cause compliance.
If I may, I would like to reword my motion that we go ahead and instead of doing it for both dates, do it for the April 16th date, and then if he would please come forward again, if it's a success, we have no problems, then we will do another special use permit for the October.
We have amended motion. Do we have a second?
A second now.
September.
I won't accept that. It's got to be both because you're going to make him come back to the public hearing and re-advertise everything, and he's hearing good fate tonight for one, and I think we should honor that request or not at all.
But we do have the right to rescind.
You have, you do have the, the right under the UDO to revoke any special use permit with cause. It would necessitate a hearing, of course, but you do have that ability.
That's right.
And just so you know, in my history on this board, this board has never done that. It's never had the guts enough to do it when it should have been done, so don't expect it to be happening if there's a problem.
I have one more thing.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Public hearing's closed.
The public hearing's closed. I'm sorry, I've already closed it, so.
Then I will go ahead with my initial proposal and ask that it be approved.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second. We've had discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, as have it. Thank you. Next, we have 5A, and I will call that Discussion in Action on Resolution Exempting the Moyoc Wastewater Project from the Requirements of Section 143-64.31 of the North Carolina General Statutes.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that this be pulled from the consent agenda. I've received some phone calls on this, and I just think, I think some of you others may have, too. It just needs to be full disclosure what this actually is about, because how it's worded is not what it's really about. And I ask the manager and the attorney to explain why this is happening.
I'd be glad to. First of all, the general statutes, well, well, let me start first. Typically, when a unit of local government proceeds with a project, construction in particular, we can identify, depending on the price of the project, particular contractors, and talk with them about what's the price going to be for the project. We do the same thing when we bid construction projects out. We get a price back, and we know where we're heading. There's a provision in general statutes that when a county is acquiring engineering or surveying work, that we have to put out RFPs, Request for Proposals, to firms that we believe may be competent to perform the engineering or surveying work, but we can't talk with them about cost. At that step, we can only talk with them under the statute about their competency and ability to do the work. Then there's a second step where we can ask for the cost from those that we found to be competent in step one, and then begin to negotiate the price of contract or the price of the service. The resolution before you is a provision within that same statute that allows a unit of local government to exempt itself for a specific project from having to go through that process of having to first identify and talk with potentially competent engineering firms in this case, and then have it identified, then, then have another conversation with them later about what's the price going to be. This will allow us to go straight to the point, which is to identify those engineering firms that we know exist out there that can do the work and ask them upfront, what's the price going to be for you to perform this work. This is not an unusual resolution. Units of local government do this regularly for particular projects. It will allow us to proceed forward more rapidly with engineering contract to get the Moyoc Wastewater Project designed and permitted. That's the purpose.
So, Mr. McCree, if you have four engineering firms, firm one and two are the two that we think most match what we want to do, you pick firm one just based on their credentials and their package, not knowing a thing about the price?
That's correct.
And then you find out, well, I don't know if you can find out or not, that it's $400,000 for something that probably should cost $100,000, but you can't do anything about it. You, I mean, or you go out and redo it again, correct?
That's correct.
Whereas, firm number two may have had the same credentials, the same scope of work and everything, and they actually priced it $400,000, but you can't, by general statute, ask them for a price when you're bidding stuff for the county. So the taxpayers get hosed on engineering costs. I know my engineering friends aren't going to like this, but that's what's happening in, in counties. They got the somebody into legislature and got this sweetheart law passed to where the engineering firms can just pretty much dictate their price. All they got to do is give you a pretty package. Whereas, when you go to build the, the product or the building, you have four people, they all submit bids, you open them up, bid one, two, three, and four, you can pick the lowest responsible bid and save the taxpayers. So I just thought this is something that the general public needs to see, some of the things the, the boards of commissioners, and not just here, but everywhere. I mean, the engineering firms somehow got that sweetheart deal in Raleigh to where they don't have to submit any cost on anything. They can just submit a pretty package, and then the boards approve it, and then it could be three times what it should cost for the engineering services.
Bottom line is, it lets you get directly to the point.
Right.
And move on with your project.
So I have no problem with this exemption because it's on behalf of the taxpayers that this works, and we should do it on every project from now on.
Many units of government do just that.
And nothing precludes you from bidding out the engineering services.
That's correct.
Design, this does not give a contract to build. This is just a design.
That's exactly right. That's an important point, that this is not in any way allow the county to fail to comply or not have to comply with the bid laws for the construction of the project. This, again, is for the design and permitting of the project.
We are bidding out the project.
Yes.
Right. We have had an example of what Commissioner O'Neill was talking about, where somebody said a general range, but they came back a second request, and it was substantially higher.
Much higher.
As a matter of fact, I don't understand why we and other local governments have not asked for that law to be changed. I'm having a disconnect here why that hasn't happened.
Because it's easy to do this.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yeah.
Do you have any indication on how much time this will save to move a project forward?
Yeah. It has a potential saving two to three weeks off the time, but more importantly, has a chance to truly affect the financial, the cost of the project.
So you're looking at savings on both ends. You're looking at time plus dollars.
Yes, sir.
And the tight economy that we're in today, those, those dollars are being spent... And the tight economy that we're in today, those dollars are being spread thin and we certainly have better look at any way we can to save money.
Yes, sir.
To put to some of the necessity projects that are out here that we know are pending and that we're going to have to address and move forward on. That's the end of my comments. Anyone else?
No, and I'm going to move that we approve the, the resolution since it was moved out into Item 5A.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Item, let me see, six and seven were withdrawn. Item eight is discussion on Karatuck Chamber Proposal. And I will turn that over to Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, by now, the board has seen that the Chamber of Commerce has submitted a proposal to the Board of Commissioners for your consideration to provide some contracted services with the county. The staff is, at this time, is asking that we have a little time to work with the chamber staff. We feel confident that we can bring back a contract that might be more in your liking and just asking tonight if the board would consider table this matter and giving your staff an opportunity with the chamber staff to revise the document a little bit and bring it back to you.
Okay. County manager has recommended that we table this tonight. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we table it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next, we have Item Nine, Appointment to the Tourism Advisory Board. I think those appointments are...
You have two, two appointments in front of you. One is for you, Mr. Chairman.
I will, I move to reappoint Patricia Rainey.
And the second one is with Ms. Gilbert and her appointee cannot be reappointed.
I would like to defer this till the next meeting. I am looking for a valid candidate that would serve this appointment. So if there's an interested party in the Moyoc area, please contact me.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can I say one other thing? When we have people that their time is up on these advisory boards, I think it would be nice if we presented them with some kind of certificate of recognition and thanks for what they've done because they put in a lot of time, effort, energy and hours and we just kind of move on to the next person and provide no recognition to them.
I totally 100% agree. Mr. Scanlon, can we look at doing something like that if it's nothing but a letter of recognition?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we have Patricia Rainey has been renominated by myself, so I will make a motion to appoint her. Have a second?
A second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next, Item Number 10, Appointment to the Board of Adjustments. Mr. Etheridge.
I will beg one more pass on this. My second person that I had has backed out.
Okay.
I will promise you I'll have a nomination next meeting.
Okay. We'll continue that until the next meeting. Item Number 11 is appointments to the Fire and EMS Board and I'm going to let Mr. Scanlon explain this one. It's a little deep for me.
Mr. Chairman, this is an advisory board for the Board of Commissioners. The way this board was set up, it's an eight-member advisory board. The Board of Commissioners directly recommend five and then the volunteer fire departments place in nomination before the commissioners, three positions where it does take the Board of Commissioners to actually vote on those. What you have in a memo form to you tonight is a recommendation from the volunteer fire departments placing it in nomination in front of you for your consideration, three members to serve as their representative on that board.
Is it three or just two from their recommendations?
You have three from their recommendations.
For how many slots?
It's the three, it's the three that the volunteer fire departments put in front of you and they have it broken down to a northern district, a southern district and an Outer Banks district and they're placing in front of you three names.
And, and the Board of Commissioners appoint how many of these people?
You do five.
Why, why wasn't this changed to seven like all of our other boards?
Well, that, it was not changed at the time. You have a recommendation from the advisory board that you consider doing that, but at this time, it's a, it's just an eight-member board.
Okay. Who are these in lieu of, Mr. Scanlon? Mr. Galgansky, I know Mr., the gentleman from Crawford, and who is the third one?
Let me get that back up for you. It is to replace...
Albert Stegner.
Excuse me?
Is it Albert Stegner?
I'm looking for you. Your Outer Banks representative is Rick Galgansky. Your mainland, your north, or your south representation was Chris Daley. I'm not, I have to look and see who the other.
The question is, are all of them eligible for reappointment?
No. These, these, these three are not eligible for reappointment. They've served their two-year terms.
Well, I don't know how y'all are going to break it down, but I'm going to continue to appoint someone that represents me or our district, not me, but at large, regardless of how y'all appoint yours. I appointed Mr. Stanley Griggs and y'all have Paul Martin next to him where I appointed Mr. Stanley Griggs as my appointment. And I don't, I don't know how you're going to break this down where five commissioners get to make appointments and then the other two get to vote on the other three? I mean, I don't understand how we're working this.
We certainly can bring that point back to you, but what's in front of you tonight is not the appointments that the commissioners directly make. These are the three positions that are placed in nomination from you by the volunteer fire departments to represent them on the board.
So there's 10 appointments on this board?
There's eight. Five that the Board of Commissioners place in a nomination and vote and three that the volunteer fire departments place in a nomination and vote. And those three are the ones in front of you tonight.
But this was originally done when there was five commissioners when we set this up.
That's correct.
And we did not change it as Commissioner O'Neill mentioned when we went seven.
If you did that, you'd have a 10-member board or if all you did was change the, the board appointees, but it still would not affect what's in front of you tonight, which is the three members being placed in nomination in front of you that are nominated from the volunteer fire departments.
I think they're going to be coming forward at a, at a later date to rectify exactly what y'all are talking about, to, to have representation where each commissioner will have a representative on the board. I think this is just something here to, by April, they have got to change the ones who, who are, their term limits have expired. Now, I do know there is another recommendation to come back and say we need to increase the board so each commissioner will have a...
Yeah, they actually have two other recommendations in front of you that would require you to go through an ordinance amendment to amend the way the board, the advisory board was put together. One was to give the deputy chief a voting right and one was to expand the number of commissioner appointees. So that, if you want to see that, that will come to you as an ordinance amendment, which in front of you tonight is simply a, an appointment of positions on the board.
Well, I wasn't on the board when this was put together, but it looks like to me everybody appointed is representing the fire departments. Hugh McCain is a fireman. Rich Galgansky is a fireman. Chris Daley's a fireman. Stanley Griggs is a fireman. Greg, is Greg Laputa a fireman? Is a fireman. Mr. Stegner from Bell's Island, is he a, he's not a fireman. Okay, there's one. Mick Lizinski, is he a fireman?
He's retired.
Okay. And Charles Berry. Is he a fireman?
I don't think so.
No, he's at Wallon Island, I think.
He's not a fireman. So two out of the ones, the commissioners are the only ones that aren't firemen.
There's no restriction of whether they are or not in fire services. The only restriction we have on appointments is that for the Board of Commissioners, which you adopted the change at one of your previous meetings, is that they not be full-time county employees that were placed on the board. They can be someone who is either employed elsewhere in a fire service or is retired. That certainly probably qualifies them to serve on this particular type of board, but it's your discretion on who you appoint. That's not a disqualifier.
I'm going to move that we continue it and, and look at the makeup of the board.
Okay.
Second that, in addition to creating either two more positions on that board or looking at the, how it's being divided now.
Okay. When we do that now, we're going to have to put something in place, unforeseen circumstances where the members can continue to serve until such a point in time.
That's, that's...
It's automatic.
Until, until you have an appointment, they can just continue serving.
Right.
My question is now, I'm reading this memo from Mr. McCain, who is the chairman. If I read this correctly, Mr. Stegner is eligible for reappointment. The way the memo reads.
In the meeting the other night, it was determined he was not eligible for reappointment. He had served two terms. Okay, we got a motion to continue this until the next meeting. Do we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. Consent agenda. Have a motion to approve? So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Commissioners report, Mrs. Gilbert.
Just a couple things. This Saturday, April 9th, at the Moyoc Fire Department, they're having their monthly breakfast. Special guest Sparky will have the Easter Bunny available for pictures and they will have an Easter egg hunt at 11:00 a.m. So bring a basket to collect your Easter eggs. And secondly, the Relay for Life is going to be at the Karatuck County High School on April 15th. It starts at 5:00 p.m. through 11:30 p.m. with all kinds of activities. There will be folks there all night long, but this is not just a fundraiser. If you haven't had the opportunity to get out to the Relay for Life, it's a life-changing experience. So please show your support. Get out to the Karatuck County High School, April 15th, and support the Relay for Life. That's all I have. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Petrie.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to challenge everybody in Karatuck County. If you see a veteran, if you see a person serving in the military, to thank them because given the sacrifice that these people are laying down with their families. I see a lot of veterans come home, a lot of service people in uniform, and I encourage everybody here to, if you see a service member, thank them for their service and their families.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie. Petrie, Petrie, excuse me, sir. Mr. Rohr.
Well, just in recognition of the fact it was a beautiful day out today, I'd like to remind everybody that the Master Gardeners have their show starting on the 15th out at the Cooperative Extension and starts noon on Friday and nine o'clock on Saturday. Come out there and take a look, buy some plants and do like I'm doing, convert your lawn to a garden because all that grass is no fun to keep up with. It's better to both pick tomatoes and anything else you can grow out there.
Mr. Martin?
In the same vein that Commissioner Petrie was speaking about veterans, there will be a prayer breakfast for all veterans in Karatuck County, which will be held Saturday, the 30th of April, from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Baptist Church in Coinjock. There's no speakers. The ladies are just wanting to recognize and thanks the veterans of this county for their service to our country. If you are a veteran, please show up. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Etheridge?
Real quick, go Butler tonight in the final four, but this afternoon, I happened upon what looked like a very serious traffic accident just south of Moyoc and I'd just like to commend, Chief Glover was there and I just watched for a few minutes, the coordination between him and the Moyoc Fire Department and the EMS. And I'd just like to commend them on handling the situation in what appeared to be a very professional manner.
You going to mention anything about the trip to Raleigh? Mr. O'Neill?
I'd just like some clarification about an agenda item that I understand is going to be on the next agenda considering the Rural Center and the 4H Center. Could someone please tell me what that is? For, I think the public needs to know that.
I've been asked to draft for the commissioners' consideration and ordinance that would allow for the use, consumption or possession of alcohol at three county facilities, namely Island, Ruatan Park, the Karatuck County Rural Center and the Karatuck County, North County Cooperative Extension Center.
I just want the record to reflect, I'm not the one that asked for it. Thank you.
I have nothing to offer this evening. So with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
We've done enough.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, Mr. Scanlon. I like to forgot you again.
Well, two, two quick comments to follow up on Commissioner Etheridge's comment. In the last couple of weeks, we have had several pretty severe accidents there in front of Ranchland and Commissioner Gilbert did ask after the last meeting for staff to approach DOT to look at them, asking for them to do a safety study there and we are moving forward with that request. I want to make sure that the folks there understand that or know that. Also, I share with you a letter that we received this week. It's, we get these every now and then, so it's nice to give recognition. I want to recognize the, the staff that works at the Outer Banks Water System. I think we sent you an email that we received from a homeowner over there that was having a difficult time and they, our staff helped them work through it and to the point where they took the time when they got back to sit down and actually write a letter of appreciation. And they specifically mentioned Bud Norton and Dave Hamm at the Southern Outer Banks Water System and I want to recognize those guys for a good job they're doing and the good customer service they're providing.
Thank you.
Could I say very well done, gentlemen?